Come to order at six five.
On what street?
Rockville.
Please.
Okay. Pressure based.
Sholty?
Here.
Sean Warren?
Here.
Stelton?
Here.
Walter?
Here.
Edgar?
Here. You've got it, Mark? Stand face flag please. Plagues allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Um, approval of agenda as presented, anybody in the council? Who that?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, all in favor say no? Passed. Okay, we have a public comment? Or anything else other than that's on our agenda tonight? Okay. Stand by. Um, the dissent agenda, the minutes of the council meeting, June twenty seven, accounts payable, the revenue and expenditure report, and the balance sheet. Everybody get a chance to look at that?
I did have one question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the accounts payable, the second to last one of the utility services, annual four hundred thousand, petosphere for sixty-four thousand.
What is that? That would be just huge.
You know, I asked Amy that, and she said something about like a, like, you know what a petosphere is?
What, what is that?
No, you know, a petosphere.
Pet spheres?
Yeah.
Sixty-four thousand.
Oh, that's for the, uh, the water tower contract.
Oh, god, contact.
That's a yearly contract?
Yeah.
But we didn't have to pay anything, how sure were they clean and washed and shutting down and all that, right?
Right, yeah, that was through the painting and everything, they amortized it out over, um, so many years, had to be able to look at what length was, but...
Once a, are you guys able to have it repainted every so many years, part of that contract?
It is, so, it is.
It gave me three years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was just making sure that you guys are obviously taking advantage of that.
Yeah.
So that they are repainting every...
So when they cleaned it inside, if there was any disturbance inside with the way the propeller works or anything, they would repair that, also, but... And you didn't get a chance to look inside it when it was completely cleaned, did you?
No, but I'm sure they've got pictures of it, huh?
I bet you have, right, they're pretty good.
Yeah.
Cause once we put the moving water in there, so don't make the icebergs, that's what kept always breaking the paint.
Yeah.
There's the ice on top.
Yeah.
Yep, I see it, too, it's just... I'm just making a note, the water tower on that.
The DPW internet, is that for like hours then? If anyone does have to wear some water, after the DPW internet?
Everything else? Like, everything else? Can I sleep?
Yeah, what's that? For the DPW internet? I thought where we pay like a hundred and thirty-three dollars a month for internet.
Yeah.
I don't know.
We do it up there, we do it here, too.
Is there any...
It was like sixty-nine dollars up here and a hundred and thirty-four dollars for the, for the internet service.
And is there any way we could like maybe get it, where it can be bundled together and bring down the cost at that?
I can find out, um, say, I'll have to look at the bills to make sure, cause they bundle it already, but...
Find out. To be in a business thing, might, that it should actually bundle it, bring the cost down.
Well, well, it doesn't buy service costs, so it doesn't... What they're paying here in the office is actually way cheaper than their current plans, and that DPW is in line with other plans. So I'd rather look at it and make sure that there's any discrepancies or anything. I think the only thing I saw, last time me and Brad looked at was there's, I think they still have the wireless, or the wire protection plan on there, which is a garbage fee. That needs to be just, water and that, everything else, pretty light. For what they pay, it's pretty cheap compared to, you know, what's out there. I mean, even when Comcast comes in, my guess Comcast would probably be for each location would probably be anywhere two, maybe three hundred per location. Cause Comcast's business is really high compared to them. So, I, I mean, I think it's, it's in line with what it should be, it's cheaper than it should be.
Yeah, if my wire went up to this...
Yeah, I'm crazy with like even wow, um, like even my building, my upstairs tenants for the residence, residential, they can get like one gig for like seventy watts. For me, it's a hundred watts.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, it's crazy, that's that big difference between commercial pricing and residential, so, it's, yeah, I mean, their, their government pricing actually is
It's...
Kind of, kind of low, cause I, I talked to our commercial rock bottom here, and gee, it's just like, don't mess with it, cause if they do, it's gonna go all, not hungry, so...
The other thing we do, so we're gonna make a note on our maintenance, because that's going past our budget, so I'll keep on from backhanding with that.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the, the backhoe and...
For which maintenance, the, you're not on the building maintenance?
Nope, we're talking about maintenance of...
Motor pool?
Equipment maintenance and supplies, looks like a year or like nineteen thousand over.
Yeah.
So, I'll, I'll put a flag upon that.
Mm-hmm.
Check, because backhoe definitely is one of the, like, we're making it so that you can make us retire everything that's around it, like, at least we have, the old timer called me up and said I found it. Alright, so, if there's any other changes in the, actually we did change, I think we're just gonna make it aware that we're gonna, look at that, what we wanted to make this, looks like we're gonna exceed that. So, I recommend to the council to approve our, uh, agenda as presented.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
Second, bye. Thank you, ma'am. Rockville, please.
Sholty?
Yes.
Sean Warren?
Yes.
Stelton?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Edgar?
Okay. Good reports. Ready?
Alright, good evening, good evening.
We're coming.
Uh, we got, uh, pretty quiet, uh, it was a pretty quiet month, but there were a couple of significant things I'll talk about. Um, during the weeks of June eighteen through twenty-four was, uh, was a lot going on. One thing I helped the county with was, uh, there was a road rating incident that started in the village, um, and, uh, south on Elm Road. Towards, uh, towards Main Order, another guy started following another guy, and they got in like a high speed pursuit with each other. Guy got out, assaulting on the side of the road, and it's crazy, but, you know, finding the guy, arresting him, so, uh, that was pretty cool. Um, the, uh, and then a couple of B and E's happened the same night. Camp Warren sent proof that it was the same set of guys that did it, but it's, it's highly probable. Uh, but the feet and grain, they got broke into, nothing was taken, they just sort of were looking for quick cash, for whoever to take. Uh, and then high profile, that, that got broken into as well. Uh, vehicle that was left abandoned in the area was actually the vehicle the suspects took. Uh, county's handling that, and I, I did the, uh, the feet and grain one, uh, but I, I don't know what, what, I didn't see the video that they had for that, so... Um, they probably put out something with suspect identities that they, they got it. But those were really the biggest things that, uh, that went down around here, any questions about it, Ken?
Uh, actually, I can tell you, um, I made twenty-seven traffic stops, issued seventeen citations, and, uh, uh, the hours went up about an hour from last one for actual Evervillah, so... Folks are, uh, coming through here and, and, uh, a little control type in here, so, uh, look, any questions or anything?
Yeah, what are your dates now, that it's...
Um, I just switched my times, it's, they still sort of vary through the week, I'm trying to get some Saturdays in there, Friday, Saturdays, but I'm noon to ten.
Noon to ten?
Noon to ten, yeah. Out of days that I'm here, which are forty hours a week, so four days, and like this week I'm here, today through Friday. And that it just varies. What's that?
Wednesday, Thursday, Monday?
I'm here today, Tuesday, Friday this week, but it just varies, so I guess Saturdays I'm there.
Okay.
Saying, I, I'm probably just not talking about the cops schedule, but live training. You know, talking after the fact, that, that'd just be my suggestion, just so that people on Facebook and stuff don't know the cops schedules.
Got any questions? Well, to, to solve that, is what, what he's not here on them times, we have the other workers in the area, correct?
Mm-hmm, yep.
So like if Chris has got these exact timepiece for us, but then in the meantime, the dispatch knows that you're in the area, whatever, to look by or check it out or whatever.
Yep, and they've been coming out here and, um, so...
So it says extra verbal time, twenty point four hours.
Yeah.
Actually, total time, which is nice, but then, on the other side, it showed your total of forty hours for last week, right? I'm just trying to read it.
I don't have that in front of me, what's, what do you got? Is that our stats?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But he broke it.
So, this is a, uh, conversation I had with Dan last week. Um, those aren't necessarily reflective of my entire time in the village. Um, that's a reflection of certain activities that I'm asked to record.
So I, we just try to explain to people, and sometimes you're like, oh, that's thirty point eight hours, I'm like, well...
So, what this is, is stats for times that I do specific things, like, community policing, I had, you know, total of twenty-nine point two hours. And that generally comes in when I'm on bike patrol, I'm on foot patrol, or I'm hanging out at schools, or I go and, uh, I talk to Dan for twenty minutes like we talked last week. I put that down as community policing. Um, office hours are time I'm in the office doing reports generally, or follow up on whatever cases that I'm dealing with. School contact hours, generally it's, uh, time that I spend inside the school, or, uh, you know, a lot of times I'll drive around, perimeter checks and stuff around the schools, and so that's what that includes. And then foot and bike patrol, when I'm inside the school, walk around, or again, walk around downtown, that's what that is, um, that's what that does. And then the property checks, uh, well, original complaints, those are when I pull a complaint number, it's not every contact I have with somebody, it's when I pull a criminal complaint number and I'm investigating something. Whether it be a crash, or assault, or a B and E. Um, next are property checks, that's just when I'm going around town. Um, some things like industrial partners tend, tend buildings in there, so I say I, I check them buildings, but when I go through Evervilla, I'm not saying I'm checking thirty places or forty, whatever, however many buildings are in there, I put down one for that, so... Um, or like when I drive around town, that's, you know, checking properties and stuff like that, that's, I'm, I'm not putting every house that I put on there. Um, I put downtown business check or something like that. Uh, traffic stops, it just says how many traffic stops I had, traffic citations that I, um, that I gave that week or that day, how many verbal warnings and how many, um, uh, yeah, I guess that's all it is, verbal warning citations and traffic stops. And then school contacts, how many times did I make contact with the school, whether I go in or, or, uh, check around the building or whatever. Some days it's more than others, just, let's see, on the June fifth, you can see I was there four times, so it's probably once at each, or twice at each school. And then, so that's the, that's what all those mean, and then, so the other one is, uh, time I spent out of the village, whether it's emergency needs or stuff for the village. You can see there's some training on there, me taking my vehicle for maintenance, um, or helping the county, or Williamson, or whatever, help with other calls as well. And that's what those totals are on the other one. Any questions?
Nope, I have a bit.
Any extra questions? Thank you. And I'm happy to talk about this with anyone, if anyone has any other questions later.
It's just one of the things we just, that wanted to be helpful, that they get a solid forty dollars of our people, and then after that, we got mobile, you guys wander around this area, because we're, we're the first plane out of the county on the east side.
Yeah, I know, and they're aware, and, you know, the whole thing is, is we're already short, and, and we don't want to...
Any new cadets?
Uh, we've got people coming in, uh, but we have people retiring at the same time, so it's like, fill in a spot, and one goes away, and so, um... I don't know where we stand with, uh, with staffing levels, with the new guys that we've had, and so I, I can't really answer that, but I know that we've had a pretty steady flow of new guys coming in and going through training. But to think about it, if we, someone comes out of the academy, uh, which is a, essentially a sixteen week process, going through, um, for sixteen weeks, for an academy, and then they get hired by a department, say us, and then it's another sixteen week pro, or eighteen weeks, sorry, eighteen week program, that they have to train, that they have to go through before they're ready to just hit the street on their own. Um, so it's, it's not, it's not a quick, hey, you're hired, let's go, I'll show you the road real quick, it's a pretty extensive, uh, pretty extensive process, so, and not everybody makes it, so...
That's true.
If we spend all this time, this money on someone, and, uh, they're not working for our department, then, you know, if we pay for their academy and then pay them for the next eighteen weeks, you know, that's, you know, almost an entire year of taking care of this guy, and it's not working out. And so then we gotta start the process over. So...
Well, thank you.
Cool?
Alright?
Yeah, absolutely.
You want to do that?
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Well, good times been the Main Street project, we've been working on that, we finished the water main up about, uh, two-thirty this afternoon, something like that. All the new water mains connected, all the leads, um, where tomorrow, there's a little bit of storm, so that's gonna be done, and then they're gonna start working on the road, so, uh, moving along good. Um, I've spent, I've spent most of my time down there, um, answering questions and helping out, so...
What did we come up with on Friday, when you handed the load off, that they figured it out?
Um, what we did is we took their meteor out, we put a meteor aggro in, and let it run overnight, and, uh, it flushed most of the stuff out, and then we let it run, um, till today. Um, we probably, we got it over, and then we got in there and put the meteor back in, but, yeah, they, um, it was just, problem is, is that it was a galvanized line and galvanized, it just, it plugs up from the inside out, and probably, you know, if they put a new line in, it'd probably blow lines inside the house. There's a quarter bit of pressure on that main out there, so... And we had, uh, three water main breaks on our mains, opening, closing valves, um, so, um, we got that pretty much all patched up. Yet another band-aid on Cherry Street, so that's probably... Yeah, seventy-eighteen.
We might get a little extra from them, because we asked their help, they were right there, all the net and everything, cause when you shut it off, turn on, shut it off, turn on, Shane called me, I'm like, well, everybody's there, you don't have to call anybody else, and you got the stuff to repair it, don't, you know, you don't have to cull in somebody else, just, let's get it done, so they're not waiting on us again, cause we're just gonna be... So we might have a little fee on that, but...
Yeah, we done, we turned it back on, blew the main, um, it came down, we dug it up, brought our back truck in, backed it out, put the repair clamp on, went back and started turning on real slow, right next to the repair clamp, a hole about that big blew out of the main. Soil's just really aggressive, I mean, you're digging it out, they backfilled with bricks and coal clunkers and just garbage, so, real hot soil is just eating the main up. So...
The main, what size of main?
Four inch.
Really?
Yeah.
It's a little small, too?
Yeah.
Pretty typical for that timeframe.
Yeah.
So, what would we have to schedule where that, where that is down the road for repair?
Yeah.
Two blocks?
Just, well, the, the bad part's the block, it's from, from Main Street to Summit Street. So, we've, we've talked, there's nothing in the way down there. Um, I told Alan, if I had a couple of part-time guys, we'd probably go down there and...
Rip out the whole thing?
Just do it ourselves, I mean, we could dig it next to the old main.
Right.
Um, you know, it would probably take, it'd take us longer than it would take an excavator, because we probably run into other stuff along the way, but three, four days probably at the most, from place out west, with the edge vein, I mean, there's, when they, when they came across the road, across, on Main Street, on Cherry Street, you know, the old mains here, and the new mains here, and they've already got, and I think it's a valve, that's there, you pull the plug out the valve, and cap off the valve, and metal like your main and take off.
Set up the canal. Right, except, so it's not gonna affect the new blacktop if we wait, then nothing worse than bringing blacktop down, probably, let's cut a little piece out, so we can fix this thing.
Yeah, when I'm going around with them tomorrow, all the, uh, all the curb boxes and all the valve boxes that they put in, um, prior to them doing any road work, I wanna make sure that I can drop my valve key down in and get on the thing, cause when, you know, a lot of times when they're filling them in, the box will move.
Yep.
Especially when they're, you know, using equipment to push it in. When we fill it in, we put a key on the, on the curb stop, through the box, filling around it, when they do it, they're, they're just...
It moves.
They can't really compact it behind it, on the backside of it, so all compaction comes from the front, and generally the valve boxes are leaning, you can't get down under the thing, so, I'm gonna go around tomorrow, make sure, before we do any blacktop or anything like that, that we can get on everything, and it's good. We'll probably do it now, we'll probably do it, um, by the race.
Got you. Any other council or anybody got any questions for Shane?
The only thing, I obviously called this morning about the water shut off, um, well, just, uh, I doubt, I don't know if this happened yet, but I guess those guys went around when they did the notification, it was that morning, it was this morning they did it, and they put the papers in the back doors of the downtown buildings, and not, they didn't address the front buildings, so...
They did it last night, actually.
Oh, last night?
Yeah.
How late last night?
Six.
Okay, yeah, we, I think we left just before six, so, but yeah, so, I got a lot of flack from the downtown businesses, cause, you know, even us, we came in, and I'm, I'm getting messages from my tenants, but I'm also, like, I had no bathrooms till one-thirty today, so like, that's, you know, I'm, people are going out to McDonald's and stuff, and, you know, and I don't know how the rest of the businesses were having problems too, but so... A little bit of a heads up maybe before would be nice, cause I think businesses could obviously reflect...
Well, it could've sent something, called Josh, Josh could put it on Facebook.
Yeah, I mean, even that would've been probably helpful, so, cause it was done...
Not the energy.
Yeah, but especially them putting them on the back doors.
Yeah.
And it's like, you know, there's no one on the back door of main businesses, you know, like, I'm the only one that uses the back door, I think of all the businesses down there.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, that was, cause, hey, you know, I'm calling my task, I'm like, oh, they put door knockers on, like, there's door hangers on, on the doors, and they're like, we never saw them, and then, then when I got some off, I'm like, oh yeah, it's cause they're just on the back doors, they're not on the front doors. But, yeah, out of that, that's...
Yeah, there was a green helmet that they sent around with your back, that's the guy.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't wanna talk to people.
No.
Not everybody's bulletproof. Okay, how about Jessica Coos? Okay, just going here.
Organizing those, they need to do a little process, Texas, they've gone out, they actually went out on the choice of the June, I started to receive payments, already, audit has started, and their target to have a roof tract available for council this end of August. The auditors were pressed for organization and information, and he passed for utility bills, we have only one shut off, July bills went out, the shut off's now, email bills, having another technology issue with email bills going out, it's supposed to judge, he's looking for a solution, so it doesn't keep happening.
Can we switch it again? No.
They won't, our B S A program automatically signed those for us, but those are the GoDaddy ones?
Yeah, we, we had to use an old email relay, because the B S A program uses an old security that no one ever uses anymore, while then GoDaddy finally, who's we are using, upgraded their security, so now the B S A software can't send out, because, or the new security update was to stop people from spamming. So any mass emails that go out on monitoring systems, unless you have that security, um, set up, it thinks you're a spammer, so it shuts it down, and so that's what's happening, and B S A doesn't have that nuclear of security. So essentially, we're having to try to find a way to head you around that, find another, they, I talked to B S A, and they, they back up all the solutions that they're gonna look into, trying to upgrade their system and make it work. So, yeah, it's just, and we're having, having all sorts of problems right now, cause they kind of push that security enhancement faster than they're going to, so like, all these old, even, three or four-year-old, like, copy machines are the same thing, that they use that old thing, you know, old technology, so now you can't email out using the machine anymore. So, it's...
Wow.
Yeah, it's a real pain, and there's no real good solution besides upgrading the machines, and that's not, you know, in, in my career, that's never a good solution, it's trying to find a way around the, the bill use, the attack.
I like how, like, the machine, the computer, the machine works great, and everything's all set up, like you set up for me, and then, then I start pushing buttons, and it doesn't have the one name on it, and I have to turn on and change it each time again.
Yeah.
I'm like, what, what went in there in the middle of the night, swapped out?
And like, it's out, it's like, it's usually just stuff, and, you know, they update it, they try to make it smarter than it should be, and that's usually what happens.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, with that said, you got anything for the Water Bowl Downtown Development Authority report?
Not really, I'm hoping Alan will have our bid thing to go out, so we can get that parking lot done. Um, I haven't got the air polling report for the Ford building back yet, um, other than that, it's pretty much just hard.
How's the guy with the Dylan's building, he's patient?
Yeah, he's, he's been alright, they signed me, they extended our dual diligence, so, and then, uh, I am still waiting, I believe I'm still waiting formally, because Dorothy from Nisa reached out with some change they wanted in the contract, it was a lot arbitrary stuff, which was dating, you know, cause we started this, bringing it back in April, so a lot of stuff reflected April. So, um, he's having to change that, he still hasn't, as far as I know, changed it yet, unless she's gotten directly, so, I'm badgering him, because I just wanna get that done.
We haven't wrote the agreement check to you, right?
No, no, I'm sure they, based on how Dorothy responded, I'm guessing they're okay with it, I mean, maybe your meeting was, I don't know if you guys had any other questions on?
I think we're just, we're just waiting for the actual contract or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, they're okay with the price and everything's fine, okay. So, yeah, so I think, I mean, at this point, it's our turn, and like I said, D D A already agreed for another year extension preemptively, so, so we're good there. So, and that's kind of how I wanna, we're probably, must, we want the year to be approved by both boards, because we don't have a guarantee of our revenue's always gonna stay that way, so we need to make sure we're being a top bit. Um, but my thought process for the D D A is always to be way ahead of it, to approve it, so it's not, you know, I don't wanna hold something more, like, I don't wanna be the one that hinders it. So, if these takes a while, that's kind of on them, cause they're receiving it, but I don't wanna be the one that's, you know, the reason why they're not getting a check.
Hey, how's the billboard company?
I don't know what's going on with that. So, I approved the design and...
Oh, so there, there's a new, newly approved design?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it was in the billboard company's hands to actually print and install it?
Yeah, so I don't know what's going on with that, I mean, we changed it, cause it was originally gonna, we were originally gonna put the, um, uh, Farmer's Field Day on it, but I axed that, because we're getting too close to that time, and we're so... Back and forth, and that's the only thing D D A's working on, is the, D D A, Choice Farms is working on bringing back the carnival and bringing back Ox Roast, what we're gonna be doing, it's, like, that's called Farmer's Field Day. Choice is already doing something out at their location, and then we're trying to get a carnival coming, um, in the parking lot here in Main Street, and then shutting down Grand River between Clark and Summit, and doing a, uh, grand stand underneath the Forest Square, and then that's also homecoming weekend, too. So, they're gonna do the parade, and, well, right now, we're having a really hard time finding a carnival that's going to actually basically agree to it, is what we're having a problem with. We've called every single one, and two of them came out, looked at the space, made sure that they'd have enough room to put their stuff, and, uh, then they just pretty much ghosted us.
If we, if we do that the homecoming weekend, that is gonna be a nightmare.
The schools, uh, the school's part of it, too, schools are organizing it, and they are... The schools, the school's part of it too, schools are organizing it and they are super excited. Cause they think if they do, cause the idea would be to do the parade on Friday and we won't close down Grand River until Saturday morning, like. Super early in the morning. So, you know, Shane Lake's getting up at like three o'clock.
I thought you were talking shutting it down like Friday night, you're gonna make it home.
No, 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 I, I don't wanna do that. And the school's actually trying to figure out a way. Cause we kinda, if we go forward with this festival every year, they're trying to figure out a way that they can agree at least to. Um, the school, schools that they play. That that fourth weekend would either be homecoming, that they try to push that to be homecoming, or they try, try to push it to be a home game. So that every year is always a home game on that fourth weekend. Which that would be kind of awesome, cause it'd kind of integrate everyone in. So, but uh, but yeah, right now, it's the carnival, cause that's kind of my biggest hindrance, like. We can do the bands, we can do all that stuff, but I mean, the carnival's gonna, what? The, the bands and drinking area, tent, whatever we do downtown is for the adults, the carnival's gonna be for the kids and. I mean, you kind of gotta have both, so Choice is gonna do a bunch of stuff out there and then we're talking about the. Uh, de-transportation, uh, it's possibly gonna donate bus drivers and buses. Because Choice Farm has six hundred parking spots that they can do up there. So the idea would be is that they can shuttle people back and forth. Which would obviously alleviate a lot of parking issues downtown, more than like the app.
There's no way that the school would like, let us have, if we could get a carnival like in that area, I mean, like field or anything, if we're gonna do it, not do it till Saturday maybe?
Uh, carnival at the school?
Yeah.
Um, we didn't really address that, like I said, it's, from all the older people that uh, remember the. You know, the carnival downtown, that's what everyone's like pushing for, so.
I thought we just talked about the village picnic, not shutting down Grand River, doing it at the school.
Right, right.
For next year. Yeah, we'll do it at the school.
Yeah, because it's got so much more room, it's got all that open area and everything.
Yeah.
And it just alleviates anybody that had it, has any issues with traffic, people can walk around, it opens it up.
I mean, community picnic would be a little bit different, the problem, I think the biggest problem that I can see with having. It in September on school grounds, you're gonna have all the carnival crew literally on school property. Which obviously could become.
Just supposed to stay six hundred feet away from it.
But I wasn't gonna say that out loud, but.
I get that, but maybe they could be somewhere different, but that could just be set up there.
Yeah, I mean, that, like I said, with school going on, that becomes problematic, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't want that.
Yeah, and that's kind of where, if we keep it up here, then it's, you know, it's not distracting students either, but. You know, and obviously, the whole point of D D A is to bring people downtown, so, you know, that's kind of part of the reason too. But yeah, the older generation, I guess Ox Roast used to always be on Main Street. And that used to be their thing and it was like big and everyone loved it down there, so that's kind of what we're trying to do and. Obviously to help businesses too, cause businesses would obviously have substantial. Uptick of business during the time that stuff is going on right now here, so. But doesn't mean it can't be changed down the road too, incorporate more.
Yeah, the other thing that I would suggest too, is if you're gonna close down Grand River, um, for that event.
Yeah.
Possibly closing in Grand River, having a detour run through Grand River rather than sending trucks and gravel trains like through town.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that would be, that would be a county issue, I think.
Yeah, and what happens is as soon as you hit Almore Grand River, then you have to get county's permission for one.
I think you're right though, so if we put like a barricade where, you know, heavy equipment bypassed for not downtown, you know, Grand River. Party, cause party's been redone, so it's all the way along the road. And then still, if somebody wanted to go into town, you could put another barricade there where you can do the little round town, but. Any heavy equipment that want bypass town, go this way.
Yeah, what's it, cause you know, Brad, where's the class A roads? Cause usually they'll pop at what, fifty-two to Hall Mason, isn't it?
Yeah.
Grand River's the only thing we got class A, Grand River's um, class B. And we got party, but it's better than our little four inch thick side streets that Sam was trying to protect with his life.
Right.
They'll break down.
You know, and if you put all the. Yeah.
Which I mean, I think that would be a good thing, but obviously direct. Big truck traffic, I mean, part of the whole reason.
It's weekend.
Yeah, I mean, part of the whole reason, yeah, you're right too, it's weekend, so the truck traffic's gonna be a little limited.
But what happens is gonna be something that they don't wanna be part of it, it, it can be done easily, so they're not.
Yeah.
In the midst of everybody.
Yeah, cause I mean, part of the reason I, I've always liked shutting down Grand River is because we're one of the only municipalities that can do that.
The only.
And that, yeah, and that's also nice, cause then when people pull up and see the barricade, they're like, oh, what's going on down there? I'm gonna check this out, cause I know like, the Jeep takeover for years, that's what, I mean, we have. The one year, I think it's close to like seven hundred people that came through town on Sunday, that stopped and like perused because they wanted to know what was going on.
Versus, just that was at the school, most people aren't gonna, they're gonna assume it's a school event.
Right.
And if they don't live here or have kids at the school, they're probably not going to investigate further.
And like I said, I mean, that's kind of, kind of the good thing about Werco Stone Grand River is that we have that ability. So it actually does help for our smaller events to become bigger, because people will stop, I'm sure the community picnic probably benefit highly from that. Because people, like I said, will get stopped and like, oh, what's this, you know, what's going on here and. You know, we didn't get any angry Facebook comments on that, so that's pretty surprising. But I think a lot of people would see like, oh, what's this going on, okay, I'm gonna look it up, and when they look it up, they might be like, oh. I think you don't have time today, but I have time next year, I'm gonna make sure I, you know, do that, so.
Right.
You know, like I said, but the whole point of bringing back a good, a big festival to Weberville is to get to the point where. You know, and the school's super involved with this too, which is to create a big event that covers the whole town, so I mean. Down the road, we can do stuff with the school, you know, cause I. My thought, what I really would like to see is, if we're gonna call the, you know, we're calling it the Farmer's Field Day. I wanna bring back the old like potato sack races and three, like, like that kind of cool stuff. You know, that a field day used to be, you know, and school would be perfect for that kind of stuff. So, I mean, just to, you know, something different, something for people.
Tractors and things like that.
So, and I mean, doing downtown, the other good thing too is, we wanna get people to stop in at Noah's or, or like Mitchell's and basically be like. Hey, I really like this place, and they might be thirty minutes away, but they're like, I'm gonna come back here next week and have dinner here. You know, it's kind of trying to up, up them to keep them around too.
Okay, we do a quilt contest, we do a wheat burn, like corporate four H contest, things like that.
Yeah. Yeah, I hear Shane's off through will wear races. So yeah, I mean, we're trying to work on. The carnival piece has been really hard, we already talked to Elliot, they're gonna actually mark us down for next year already, but it's. You know, it's been, yeah, like I said, Choice is doing something awesome, so. You know, at first, they were gonna do a separate thing and I'm like, why don't we just do it all together and they're not that far out there and. If we can pull people into Weberville from outside areas, you know, they're gonna head there and they're, you know, I mean, the more spots that they can. They can do and we're talking about possibly bringing in the Oxbur back in too. And then seeing if we can get the local restaurants involved, cause Choice is gonna have their Oxbur. But um, talking to Loretta out there, it's like, hey, why don't we do like an Oxbur, like. You know, who can make the best Oxburger thing?
Good guy.
Yeah, I mean, just kind of a cool thing that makes it different and. I was like, you might want to down them from like not normal size, yeah, like sliders or whatever, so people can taste all of them. Um, but I thought that'd be kind of cool and they were super excited. Even Bender was like, we can make beef and sell it off to the restaurants and have them do their little what's on it, so, like, that'd be kind of cool.
And don't forget too, by the end of September, chili season.
Is what?
Chili season.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, that's why I said, go back to all that, you wanna get everything you can in there.
Right, you get them all to chili.
Oh, yeah.
You get them all, you wanna do everything you can.
Yeah, we, we used to do the, the fall festival back, uh.
I remember that.
Yeah, we did the chili cook-off and stuff, which we got in trouble the first year for, that was. That was fun, well, cause we did, we didn't know, cause that was uh, that was when I first took over the D D A. And I didn't realize, like, you have to have this whole like safe serve thing. So when someone's like, oh, we should do a chili cook-off, I'm like, cool, let's do it, and so we did it. And the health department did not think it was funny that random people were bringing lots of chili and serving to people. So, so the next year, we had to do the chili cook-off with just the restaurants. You know, restaurants and McDonald's brought in their chili, which was actually really good. Kind of surprising that I never knew that was possible, but.
I think that would be fun though, cause I know they used to do it over there in the fall barn, you know, the women would do their things and everything, and I'm sure they understand too, but I think. Have is, is really important too.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, that was part of the idea too, is with fencing off the block from Main Street and Summit. So that it could be, you know, a serve area or a tent, where it's like, well, people can sit there and watch their kids right at the carnival, right here at the drugstore parking lot, Main Street. You know, so it kind of gives, you know, a little bit of hope, you know, parents get to relax, hang out, you know. Figure pretty much picking tables and stuff and the kids can go out and play and, you know, it's a safe area, so it's not against problem.
As long as it's detoured to Grand River and home, I'm fine with it.
Like I said, I, I think it would be good to do like truck traffic and maybe even just a banner there for people, but then. You know, letting cars and stuff, they wanna come through, you know.
They can find their way through town.
Yeah, it's only two blocks, it's not that bad, trucks, I understand, cause. Feel like, uh, what was it, it was three years, three, four years ago before COVID, was um. Turns out, we did the Jeep takeover. On the week before the prep time for the fall garden. And I had a lot of, a lot of carnival people giving me a choice finger as they were bypassing. On Summit, because we were detouring them for that time, so, hopefully not that. You know, but, like I said, it's shutting down Grand River actually works out well, cause you have a ton of people that stop and wanna know what's going on there. They end up coming and, you know, it makes, you know, people, unfortunately with small towns, people blink. You know, they go by and they don't even think about it, so you have some people that come to our shop that. It's like, oh, I didn't even know you were here, like, you know, I live just on the other side of the fall, I'm working lands, I drive by here every day. Like, oh, are you guys new? I'm like, I've been here for like fifteen years, so. Oh, really? So people just don't pay attention to towns, so we can get them to stop and actually take notice, it's, it's good.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Everybody get a chance to look at our monthly report with Jim Wright and our enforcement officer. Okay, and uh, Nisa, you've already mentioned that.
Yep, there's nothing new there, um, we have a, a meeting coming up on Thursday, so. I'll have to hopefully do some next week.
Sounds good, hopefully we'll get our last drink around the league. I'll support it, fall, fall festival.
Right.
Okay, um, Jessica was. So, Scott, your attorney, how are you doing, sir?
I'm, I'm doing well, and how, how are you?
We're doing great.
Great.
I think we're forward moving here in the town of Weberville.
Well. Yeah, I mean, uh, since the last meeting, I, I have uh, wrote to her, I called the parole agent for Jamie Hoard. Uh, looking for an update as to uh, priority, as who's gonna get paid first. Uh, just to confirm what I believe is the correct way that the village gets uh, payment first. Uh, she get a phone call back shortly, I hope on that matter. Uh, I also wrote a letter, a combination of a letter and objection to M M L. Uh, because I think the last meeting and the meeting before, um, we had to. Sign the proof of claim, um, for the bond. And my objection, uh, to go along with that proof of claim was that it's my position that the M M L. Should still make the village whole for the reported losses. That stem from Jamie's actions. The idea being, all right. If you're willing to give us the bond money from twenty-one to twenty-two, go ahead and give us that money, but you're on notice, M M L, that. I believe you should pay us also for um. Twenty to twenty-one, possibly nineteen to twenty. Uh, just depending on where, how the numbers work out, but either way, uh, should hear back shortly on that matter. Um, Otis Elevator, I got a letter from them on Monday after I sent a letter out after our last meeting. Uh, saying that we're looking to terminate the contract, um, from their legal department. It just says that uh, they're received my letter and that uh, they're gonna perform a review. And that they will be in contact the next few days, so, and that was on, I just emailed, brought to my attention on July tenth, so yesterday.
Friday.
Monday.
Yesterday was Monday, sorry.
That's all right. So as soon as I get an update on that, uh, I'll. Inform you guys, um.
They did, they did call me on my cell phone.
Did they?
Yeah, and they, and I was very nice to them, I said, hey, you know, there's. And they go, yes, we understand, we laughed, and we weren't there. And I said, we, we just, you guys might want a little bit of. We're just not happy and we want out, just like if I wasn't doing my job, right? A little like, I get it, and then first he was like, oh, we're gonna come after you whole force, I'm like. We haven't gotten, yeah, we're gonna ask you to show up, and so he calmed down. And I said, well, we're gonna get you something from our lawyer, because the council members want to try something else. But we're not sitting here being upset with you, we just wanna change. So, that's, that's where you're at.
Yeah, I mean, at, at the end of the day, they're the ones in breach, you know, so. It, it's probably getting a business transaction, they, they don't wanna see us go, and they think they probably got us locked in some way, but. They're the breaching party, so I think they got a problem.
Any of the conversation I had, where they, he never reached out and said, well, we can do extra for you, we can do this for you, let me, I make sure somebody shows up every three weeks. None of that was brought up.
I kind of wonder if, with that being said, they've already kind of got the mindset like, all right, we're just gonna part ways. We'll see, but either way, I don't have the official acceptance of our termination, so until we have that, I still would caution the. The council to move forward with any other company, unless that company's willing to acknowledge that uh, at any given moment. We, we, we would wanna step away from their contract, but that just seems to complicate things personally.
Just wait, see what goes.
Uh, Alpha Omega, no update on that matter, uh, I did see that the building's posted for sale, so I don't know if that's something to come above?
I saw that on the way in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, Jim Wright gave me a call and, you know, of course, this guy was, you know, always getting it done and then forgiving us later or. And then we finally, we're getting all our information, finally, that Jim Wright needs, so just. Just being compliant is all we tried to ask those gentlemen, we never raised their voice or given any other hostility, other, just trying to tell him like, hey, just. Just give us the information, so we go forward, same thing with Allen lawyer, and then Drank Commission, when he was over there, wherever they have attention problems, kind of.
Well, it's strange now that they put the place up for sale, like I said, now that things seem to be moving in the right direction.
It is, yeah.
Uh, it's been a little unpredictable this entire time, though, with these folks, so, I don't know, each is to their own, they can do what they choose, I guess, if they wanna sell it. Um, White Rose, uh, that matter's still pending in circuit court, the only other update with that matter is there were subsequent tickets. Uh, filed by Jim Wright's involving outdoor storage. Uh, we were set for a hearing last Friday, but for the fact that the question to be answered. The definition of outdoor storage was effectively the centerpiece of the first go around, the first hearing. That matter, which is now in circuit court. There's no real reason to burn more time and energy going to district court and asking the same question. Because all the villagers do, and I'm not trying to talk myself out of work, but effectively you guys would be staying, I'd be over there on the clock. Asking Judge Allen the same question, and he'd probably rule in my favor, cause he's already done that. Only to get appealed up to circuit court again on the same matter, so the, the cases are effectively combined at this point, the first matter and these new tickets. What I hope will come of this is that uh, circuit court will finally give us an opinion, I hope that it's. As I want it to be in the villagers' favor. And what will happen is that these subsequent tickets that have been combined with the first case, those, hopefully those penalties will be. Uh, leviated against White Rose and every day the breach, or uh, every day the ordinance. And every day is a breach, or, uh, every day is a ordinance violation, so. It could be effectively another two five hundred dollar penalties on top of the first five hundred that was already levied, so. Uh, but at the end of the day, obviously the village wants compliance, you know. That five hundred bucks is a drop in the bucket compared to the, the cost of this matter, so we just want affirmative answer from circuit court. Giving us the powers that, worst case scenario, go in there and remove the stuff if we have to, so.
Well, I understand that the, the original ticket was, there's the question of what is outdoor storage, but. I'm not sure how many people have noticed, but they have strategically put a fifty-three foot trailer. Parallel, so you can't see, but what you can see under it is that there's clearly the length of that outbuilding, fifty feet deep. Of these containers being stored. There's no way to argue that that's.
Yeah.
Not outside storage.
And, and that's my just observation of the opposing side is that. I'm not sure how much the attorney on the other side knows what exactly is going on on the premises. Because when we were discussing the subsequent tickets about outdoor storage. I pretty much said, hey, I've got photos for multiple days, you can tell this stuff's not moving anywhere and hasn't moved anywhere. In fact, when I drove into town today, it's the same spot, so.
It's worse.
It, it is not worse, so I mean, this whole argument that, well, we were just moving stuff out to clean the shop up, we're going to move it back in. Uh, I think they're finally out of gas with that one, so, I, we just need the circuit court to give us an answer, so.
Is that the one where the judge's on leave?
She was on some form of medical leave and, uh, the clerk, that's almost a month ago, said that, uh, they expected her back soon, so.
Will to stop for one person.
That's what I'm having.
Okay, anything else from us?
No, that's about all I have at the moment, so.
I sold the deal of the street here, we, we did a little paragraph, three sentences along with the school. The school was going to start, they're going to start two weeks prior that we mentioned to the main street. And we just wanted the school to be aware of that, hey, we're all on schedule, possibly it'll be done before that, but. The two weeks that you took away, we still want, and they are, I just talked with Andy today, he said, they've been very cooperative. To work whatever it would take to finish this job.
Oh, good.
So nobody's got any diapers on at this point, so.
I did have a complaint about, um, elementary school pickup.
Okay.
Um, with all the cars parking, they're backed all the way up to Grand River.
In the past.
Still.
How? It's all put up?
Well, I mean, yeah, but I mean, with schools.
Right, okay.
Why couldn't they, why can't they do the pickup like?
At the back.
At the back.
You know, it might happen.
And eliminate all the traffic problems there.
Because, uh, it's, it's because of the bus drive, that's where the buses pick the kids up. And they, uh, from what I've understood is they're concerned that obviously kids going in between the buses. While they're trying to load the kids up to get out is the problem.
They may have to paint new lines because, like, that'd be down here, so it might be two weeks of, uh, in the neighborhood.
We used to be able to do that, but they changed it.
Yeah, it used to be the opposite. It used to be that buses used to line up in front of the school. And, I mean, they had the back pickup, but then the parents were around for that and they moved them to the back when they did all the.
They had to, that's a awful big parking lot back there.
Yeah.
It seems like we ought to be able to separate something so that all the pickups done on school property.
Yeah.
I mean, cars sitting on main street.
Yeah.
They shouldn't be sitting there.
It's usually not, I mean, I pick up Paisley every, every time I walk over there and get her, and I mean, usually. This year was the first year that they kind of, they have these walkie system and they, it was a little rough at first, but then they were really fast about getting them. In and out really, really quick. I mean, honestly, I think better solution would be if they could extend their little oval. To like actually have, you know, two cars or go around and have people, because what usually happens is one kid's not out yet. And they're at the front line, they're going to have everyone backing up, you know, because of that, but like I said, towards, towards the middle of the year, they were pretty fluid. Where cars were, I mean, as they're pulling off, the kid was right there, hop in, boom, gone. So, I mean, by the time, we would wait for Paisley, they load, they have all the kids go to the gym and then they walkie as the kids, you know. They actually were really good because they would see like us come out of alley and they'd call for Paisley. So like we would get to the school and she'd already be there and we'd walk out, but, um, in that time period, usually like you'd see all the cars going in and out. So the only problem that I ever saw was they were culling off that driveway, so then all the parents were waiting for that driveway to be open. And then that was what was causing probably the majority of the problem with blocking that off. So, I mean, I think, I think they do need to figure out maybe a better plan, so. Or maybe say like grades X or whatever can go in the back building, you know, and then, you know, these kids can go in the front building.
Something.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that will alleviate a little bit of it too, so.
I don't think it'd take much because if you, you can fit, what, fifteen cars in there, which is probably fifteen kids, I mean, if you cut that in half or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, part of their other problem that they had, I know, this last year too, was also volunteers and, you know, the, the teachers are already busy doing this and that. So they had to do, had a lot of aides, so you'd see different people out there quite a bit. Um, fill in and there'd be times where they wouldn't even have like cross, crossing guard because they didn't have anyone that could volunteer to do that, which, you know, so it's, I mean, I think. But honestly, I mean, from start to finish, you're talking at, you know, starts at maybe two fifty and then everyone's gone by three times, we're talking twenty minutes realistically. I mean, is that, that big of a, you know, huge hindrance for that? I mean, I think that's kind of a grab, I mean, it's, it's worse, I can see it, but twenty minutes a day isn't, you know, super problematic, but. I'm sure that, like I said, the school wants a fluid system there, so I mean, any input that they could have, I think would probably be a kind of a, you know, from hearing that there's complaints, but. Like I said, I, obviously I take notice as a parent, but I'll state notices, you know, with the DDA side and the businesses and stuff. And I so far have not seen any issues or even safety issues that I was concerned about. Problem that we're going to have, a huge problem we're going to have, is that we're going in parallel parking and not slots. So you're losing significant parking downtown or down main street when that switches, which I have feeling is going to be a big problem.
Yeah, because normally I used to pick up my grandson there and there'd be at least like seven or eight cars parked in front of the school. Where people walked in and went, got their kids and then came out and took off.
Yeah, yeah, because I, I voiced my opinion, but, uh, obviously here, but I also, and me and Sam talked about, but. I was doing the school parallel parking right there, it's scary for kids if they walk between those cars and someone's backing off or taking off. It's going to be a bad problem.
So what, so can we put the crosshairs parking?
Yeah.
Or is it out the road to park? Can we angle park instead of parallel parking?
Now, right now, I mean, the plans that, and, and part of the angle parking was being gotten rid of. So, you know, the way the plans are set up is for parallel parking. I mean, I could, we could take a look at the route and see.
I mean, I could see parallel parking down past the school, past that ride along the street, like we talked about, but if they want to have the angle parking right in front of the school.
Well, I don't think we've got the curb lines lined up without the cars being out into the traffic lane to do that, so, um.
Making use.
Was there angle parking before we did all this right there?
Well, you know, over the years, there has been a variety of different parking. I mean, part of what we're finding out there with the work that's going on is there are other curb lines that were buried under the grass at different times. So this, this is, over time, has really changed a lot. Um, angle parking is generally not considered favorable in the downtown area. Uh, and which is why the plan is to make it parallel parking. It's consistent with the other parking in the village. Machine made a good point. The whole reason that crosswalk was put in there, Cherry Street across Main. That was done as part of the safer routes to schools to get the kids to cross at the crosswalk. Don't go between cars and jaywalk or try to get access to vehicles or that kind of thing.
So where the party stores, is that going to be, that won't be without the angle parking? Right, the party stores, right?
No, I think it's all parallel parking.
And we'll, of course, opt for it. And, and when you park there, you got a bigger gap where you can hang out in the street.
I gotta look at the plans, but I think we're pulling the curbs in a little bit, so rather than the cars being angle parking there. They will be just parallel parked, just like we've got right out here.
Right.
Which we will cut our parking down now. But we've got the Summit Street parking lot, it's going to go in, you've got the parking that's behind the party store now.
Right.
Doesn't get used significantly.
It will. Okay. I see you saying angle, no, I've seen a couple of times where we're getting parking.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only thing, it's like, let me know spots are definitely full lots during pickup. And it does help, again, leaky, you know, a little bit of the flow there. Um, I don't really know how you would generally fix it, I mean, unless the school would be. And I'm, I'm a safety issue, but it would be a great to get rid of some of that lawn and put angle parking, if you pull in that, hopefully you have angle parking on that side too. You know, but I don't know, I mean, the province, it's also try to prevent a bunch of elementary kids. Doesn't matter where you put crosswalks or how many people will see, because you have out there, they're going to run wherever.
Right.
They feel like they want to run.
Kids are going.
Yeah. I've, I've had to grab a couple of kids that even tried to run in front of cars going around those oval driveway or whatever. And it's like, nope, and that's when I realized, it's like, oh, that's why they put those old loops on the back of, back of the accident.
Okay, Alan, what do you got, engineer reports?
Not a lot, um, just to add, um, one of the things that was noticed this afternoon, it was off of dry, there was a lot of dust. Um, we talked about it this afternoon and, um, you know, the winds are kicking up a little bit and it's making a bit of a mess, so. We're going to come back and take care of that tomorrow.
Water?
All right. Uh, I don't know if they're going to use Cori, I think it just wet it down a little bit, threw it a couple of times during the day. Just keep the dust out. They're going to be starting the road work, so it's, it's time to start doing that.
It wasn't raining, they got a little water spray truck?
I think they do.
Okay. So I know David Carter's got one.
But I don't have a lot to add. I mean, you brought up like that you were at school and I know the letter got sent to him and so. Contractor, even though they got a little bit of a delay on the water main because of the testing, they're pretty much back on schedule and. You know, their goal is to try to be done, be, not with the wear and course, but with the level and course and have it all paved and sealed up before school starts. So even with the Labor Day, so. Or they do it earlier, down, earlier.
Any other reports you want to add to?
Yeah, I do want to mention something that, uh, came up today, so DTE reached out to me regarding the, uh, streetlights that are going down Oak Street. And, uh, I guess Brandon thought that we hadn't gave him a signed contract and payment. And I copied Jessica and within five minutes she said, here's proof that we paid, they cashed the check and it's the signed agreement, so. Kudos to Jessica for being so organized and staying on top of things, but unfortunately because DTE was not, that pushes out their timeline for putting those lights to October.
Great.
We did our part.
Thanks, Alan.
Hey.
See ya.
Bye.
The other thing is, we got a truck back from Mike Young and.
Yeah, I thought, but. I forgot about that.
Yeah, so we got it back, everything working good on it? Everything, so I sat there and I was thinking, one night at a fifty, I'm thinking, he spent all that money and I, I did talk to Zmart and Lansing and he said nine hundred seventy-five bucks. We'll make it drip off there, we'll spray tar everywhere, it's going to be in the door panels all over the place. Then as I was here, I was thinking of the guy who followed him too, uh, his name's Dave, you could give him a call. But I don't know how you guys thought, I, we did such, they did such an excellent job, and they tough coated where they did stuff, but to literally. And just because I was just thinking that I would probably spray that guy, but it was Zmart, because it's all been taken apart, it's all been cleaned, it's all been. Uh, they call it some chemical clean they do and then they put the tough coat where, where they worked on it. But I just didn't know a lot of the council felt, we had a place reseal it with Zmart or tough coat, right? And that guy Dave on the body, he might be more reasonable than Zmart and Lansing, I just.
Is that one of them like oil spray on coatings that you do every year or is that actually like?
Nope, one time, one time, we'll spray Zmart, spray that goofy coating and I do my vehicles, but.
Well, if it's going to protect.
It helps for rusting.
We got brain box size and everything, and they, they did protect it with a chemical and all that, but nothing's better than watching the Zmart drip stuff and it's just everywhere, so.
Does that have a, uh, bed liner on it?
Yes.
Spraying it or is that?
Spray.
Spray.
Yeah, they, they redid, they redid the bed sites on there, redid that.
Oh, wow, nice.
I just, as much as they had a part, as much as they came in before we'd go into, you know, like, it's not frained on yet. They could, you know, it'd be really cool if they could take advantage of, you know, I think Dave might only be four or five hundred bucks, but. You know, they drill holes and they spray inside the backside of them up here.
And we kept it a diaphragm.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's nothing I just probably think your type of, it might not be a bad idea, because the truck, other than that, they all set up there that we, the money that we put into it. That if you traded it in, you'd get all your money back because that definitely was worth the repairs and. I just did our dealership and they, they do do my deal, where they were how we would make changes, but, yeah.
Hey, we could also do them the next time, but, um, talking to a lot of the other municipalities, what they do is they buy their trucks, they keep them for two years. And the price that they get from my deal, after they run them for two years, they can get at least their money back and sometimes even more. Because of the discount they get, so that's going to save you a lot of money on maintenance.
Maintenance.
Yeah. It's just the thought and then, and just that, that truck got away from us and, yeah, it just was, no matter what we did, if we ever did this money on front that we were able to do. And if we didn't do that, then you were going to sell it for twenty-five, thirty-five hundred bucks and go from there and somebody else would have to do all that work. We do, we, we invested, but when you go to trade in and return and like he said, not deliver to you, you're bringing your vehicles, there you go.
That's something, I mean, like, Ben, we should probably look at that, you know, these trucks are going to last us three, four more years, probably.
Yeah, I mean, three, four more years and that'd get us past so we get our dump truck straight around.
I was going to say, once we fix the dump truck situation and the tobacco situation, then, then we look at trucks.
Yes, yeah, and tobacco, we should be, maybe taking it up there, we should have did that right off the get-go. You got, unless it's a perch changing program for outside work to be, you know, having a mobile guy come out, it's a perch.
Yeah.
All right, so that's what I had brought up, uh, point and pay two thousand dollars for, uh, spraying for the little insect bug and all that for this, this, uh. Point and pay? Our office here.
Point and pay for the car.
They spray the crack. I have, I was looking at two different things, I have, okay. Okay, two thousand feet, that'd be point and pay, this is for the, so they can go online and pay the bills.
So, and let me send the card reader so we can get rid of that.
Well, how's everybody feeling on that?
Jessica, I just want to make sure it's, it's a one-time fee, we don't have to pay a monthly.
A few months.
Okay, I read it, but I just wanted to clarify, ask the question again, and I will give a full check, everything.
Yeah, fifty dollars still, that's a big computers.
It's, it's, yeah. And it wipes out that five hundred, okay, just.
And then the fifty dollar.
No, I just said two thousand, no fifty dollars in each one at all.
And no five hundred, that would be right. And this is, the contract is for how long?
The life of the contract, so it's like a rolling one, so we'll keep, we'll keep it as long as we don't cancel it.
Annaling, so it's annaling, you know, so we don't have to.
Right, but we don't want to pay that two thousand dollars each year or anything like that, just go with it, two thousand and start it.
And you see this too, so I'm Josh Backy, this is what we got to do because the old one's old and it doesn't. And you see this too? So, I'm Josh Rocky, this is what we gotta do because the old one's old and it doesn't work. You still want this?
Yeah, 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 you see.
Past my ideas, I, I don't know which one to be right, I just know that.
I mean, as long as they enter it's BSN A, it makes it easier and simple to have one system instead of multiples and some would get better. So, and as long as they also make sure that you are charging the, uh, fee on the, you know, on the front side and not the backside.
Yeah, you have the fee set on here too.
And we charge you now? What, if somebody doesn't have, does it cost them anything?
Oh, yeah, it's costing us money.
Costing us.
It is costing us.
Yeah, because it should be from the municipalities, you almost always wanna make sure that they set it up so that three and a half percent or whatever is actually charged to the taxpayer or the person paying, not to the village, because it's not fair to the taxpayers to pay someone else's credit.
And point and pay works more mainly with municipalities, so they're not like finger to the lip.
Yeah.
That would be a little, you know.
Which means if they have a online system, that's probably how they, they do it, they probably charge the fee. If you go checkout, that's usually, like, I know BSN A usually, that's how they do is for a long time, it's not a long time, it's not paid like that, but like Access Gov, I think is how they used to pay, used to do stuff, so if you paid your taxes online through BSN A, you went to Access Gov and then Access Gov actually directly charged like, I don't know, it's like 11 to 20 dollars or something for you to use their system to process credit to give them the spell, so I guess as long as that's how that system works, so that they're charging your credit fees through to the customer as a upcharge, that's all you have to work out.
This would obviously allow card readers to pay it online, but how would that work with? Is there gonna be like a, um, a bill online that's then viewable of say like water?
They'll be the same setup as the now, except instead of getting transferred to ACI, which is what we have now, which actually isn't compatible with BSN A, they should have to reconnect us after their last update, because people have problems with payments. Um, but they would go there and then they'd see their bill and then they could just go through and pay it on there.
Is that, is that online? Like, on, on our website, I mean?
Yeah, it's through BSN A, remembers how you like went, went to your tax bill and when they're all late, decide pay your next bill and click on it.
And it's one of two that are compatible with BSN A. The other one never got back to me. It's the only one that did.
And the customers are gonna be charged 3% to be able to use us?
Yep.
Okay.
Social Security depends, sector of state charges.
Because that's from the banks, that's their processing fee.
Credit just gave a couple months there.
So what's our flavor?
So are we?
What are we thinking? Is there any other, there's nobody else who got back for you? Is that points of pay?
Points of pay and voice calls, the other thing, I just thought I'd get a hold of the last one.
And the, the system we have right now, we know it's not gonna be working because they're called the warranty that we need to switch, so. So we have to hand it.
Yeah.
Not really very much.
Any other idea, but there isn't because we have to communicate with BSN A.
Right, yeah, yeah, so BSN A or?
The only, I only wanted to be, for, try it for a year, I don't wanna be hooked in if, if we do it just to try to get stepped over so it's still communicate with BSN A and then I'd say one year and then we've been that way, six or something else when you were different, but because you're gonna run another route, we're in the way to carry on.
Right.
There's a lot of people that pay on one, and they're gonna pay the 3%, they have to.
They have to pay the 3% already.
Alright, so it's nothing to change, so.
No, because I pay online and you have to pay the extra whatever fees that you're paying online, so that's not that big of a deal, it's a convenience.
Yeah.
Case, let me hear your motions.
Uh, I will make a motion to approve using point and pay as the online bill service, which is compatible with the BSN A software, not to exceed the $2,000 fee. Back in.
Okay, discussion. Can you put on your motion for one year? Just so we're not, because is there anywhere where it's like it's more than one year?
So, would that change the amount though, because then they'll charge 500 setup fee and $50 monthly fee?
Yep.
Or?
Yeah.
They're gonna pay the $1,100 for a year.
With, with, um, opportunity where we could write a letter and call it a year, I don't, or that, do you still want to do that? Year, I would like an annually update if we like it or don't like it.
Well, we have the option to just cancel it if, if we don't.
Most of the online bill is not, is write a letter to tell them they're gonna have to cancel. They're only gonna do it for a year.
Okay, but if we just signed that day, it's awesome, then we just lost that deal that we had.
So, if you consider the trial period to be for two years, after two years, we will, we will be at that.
So, so try it.
Yeah, I mean, as long as you're not contract term.
Right.
You know, and you're probably gonna wanna look into, unless it's, especially Jessica, is, um, all these new businesses are doing auto working contracts, which are awful, like every business does them now. And so, the first thing I always suggest even our clients is like call up and just say you don't wanna auto work a contract, meaning just so you're not stuck in that. So, you know, but that you guys can obviously, two years, we've set trial period, if it works, boy, you can keep going with it, if it doesn't, then you guys can check, but as long as you're not setting to an actual contract, contract, they have early termination, which doesn't sound like that, because it honestly sounds like to, to me that they're charging on the front end, so like, they're gonna be more likely to want you to go away after the fact, not in the front end, because they're making, essentially making their money up front, from you. Uh, so, I mean, for that, two years, you know, they're getting the money.
More discussion?
Yes.
Shoulder?
Yes.
Scandal?
Yes.
Water?
Yes.
Okay, hi, Mr. Teal, uh, motion, I recommend to the council that Teal represents to be tied to downtown Lake Close to the moment awareness of ovarian cancer that you're delivering. It's okay, I recommend the council. So who?
Second.
Second. Any discussion on call call please?
Shoulder?
Yes.
Shoulder?
Yes.
Scandal?
Yes.
Water?
Yes.
Yes. So, Orky Ridge Guard, I, for some reason, I had two grand in my head, I did, because it was two grand one time and because 7,800, 750 dollars, it's like.
Yeah, for the monthly, that was different. This is just a suggestion that they offered us, um, to stop things from falling down the ceiling and running. They did them and they sprayed and they put down monster damage.
And that was how much?
That was the two, if you started, then it was like $50, which one, five plus nine.
It was here, 75 dollars a month.
It was 75.
75 a month.
So, yeah, wow.
I mean, they can't stop something for 75 dollars a month, you have to come back every time. I think this is a way.
Wouldn't you think we should try a different company?
Yeah, yeah, I just think that's a lot and something that is optional.
Like it will help, but it's not like necessary.
I just don't see where, I like.
Because right now we just.
Paying for what they did.
Yeah, I, I mean, 2,000, what I remember here, I put 8,000, I, I bought it.
Yeah, maybe you're.
There's only 1,100 dollars left in the budget for building maintenance anyway.
Can't use it on one thing.
Yeah.
Let, let it just come back once a month for the second time.
Check what they have to check.
Yeah.
Anyway. Or maybe there might be, we'll Google somebody, somebody else, it might be more useful to.
And say, and say at that price, I would shop around for her if you were.
We tried, we Googled, of course, Orky came up right away, they came out right away, they sprayed, I mean, like, we had a bunch of them.
Pretty sure SPCA would be.
I was gonna say, I've, I've had to work at my, I had them at my house and that's, it's funny, because it was same thing, as they like kinda, you know, put me in the monster trap. Where I'm like, oh yeah, like, you know, 200 bucks or whatever, and then like 50 bucks a month, keep doing it, and then like the first month, they're like, yeah, you're gonna need a more progressive plan, you need to go to the 300 dollar a month plan, and I'm like, no.
Uh-huh. Have that a couple cans of rain.
Yeah.
You know, some other guards and maybe, um, things.
I mean, I would even look at, plug me in on hold, I mean, he's a local company.
Yep.
Local person and, uh, I mean, the problem you have with those guys is they're obviously huge corporations, so it's all about making as much money as possible and you know, I'm sure the corporation's getting probably 90% of it.
So I recommend the council disprove the Orky Ridge Guard, the, that they wanted to force, it's pretty accessible.
Some would.
Second?
Second.
Second by Deborah. All voters say aye?
Aye.
Voting sign? AIS backhoe. Last repair that they actually found, the beginning of the can of worms that Shane started with was the troll that comes off the passenger side, left side, or actually the left side of the chair, has a joystick and there's like a something of liquid that doesn't freeze in the bottom, down by the seat, and they repaired the part that they thought it was and when they got done, um, they were moving around, you touched a lot of that chair that they started having. Wes is his name, but AIS called me, said we were pulling that back, we're not charging for the tie or the part that we just put on, we can get back off, but you know, about a thousand, 310, 10.72 cents is the part that had the gel in it that's connected up and that's the best I know, electric over hydraulic. So, in the future, anybody that's here, don't buy anything that has operating tools and levers that actually sit on the seat that you sit in.
So now that's working, wouldn't it be a prime idea to groom it and buy something else?
Yep, is it fixed?
Uh, this is a standstill because Deborah slapped my hand, so I have, I have made that's part of the group plan. I do have it up there and some old dimer didn't run into the thing and said, hey, we, we found it from the beginning, what they found. And Wes, I said, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to do some more pencil trimming for the other parts that were changed for no reason. And he's looking into that, so at this point, not to exceed 11,310 dollars and 172 cents, we will have a full function backup and then if he can do better than that, which I've asked, and we'll see if there'll be a better discount than that. I have, I was trying to talk to him today, but every time I thought about calling, somebody else called me.
What's their hourly, like 200 bucks?
How hourly, not?
Usually 260.
260.
I know, I'm thinking.
I'm just looking, even if they were 300 dollars an hour, it's still 20 hours of labor is a lot.
What's it been in there? Have they done it two weeks?
Oh, yeah.
They literally said they had guys working, work on it and walked away, because they couldn't get nothing to work.
They, they had a guy, the mobile guy was there 40 hours. Yeah.
They had it in their building and they called in some other, literally a guy, well, they're like, I, I got nothing out, I don't know what's wrong with it. So then they did their other thing.
Cause it's worth it, he's asking the question of, before we spend 11 grand, what they would give us on trading, or as it is?
Probably nothing, because it doesn't work.
Right, right.
I mean, they've got the parts and they know what's wrong with it.
Yeah, you probably have to go to his step and then you back up and go, alright, now it's fixed, you say this is the best thing since.
I mean, regardless, I'm still with Josh of, you know, I've done this many times with my own stuff where it nickels and dimes you, as much as, oh, everything's working, I should keep it, no, that's the best time to sell it is when nickel and dime equipment is working.
We can, we don't, it can stay there, we can call them tomorrow and say, look, um, you have a case backhoe there and you don't wanna pay this, but the your tractor sits there in their shop, I don't know how, I don't think it's tore up a lot, but it doesn't move.
Right.
Would they, I don't know, but they would reflect, I would think if they're any type of company, they would reflect on this, knowing that what you did put into it, if you wanted to upgrade to a case backhoe.
So I said, it might be at least, at least worth asking the question, might not like the answer, but.
Yeah, I don't know how that works the fastest situation, but, you know, I don't know, like, my business, someone, someone brings a pure in and I throw parts at it and then I finally figure it out, I don't get paid for the parts and the time I put into it to figure it out, it's, I don't get paid for the actual repair because I'm not, you know, I'm not charging a customer for all the schooling I had to go through to figure out what the problem is, because my personal opinion is I should have had the knowledge to figure it out the first time, you know, so that's kinda where, you know, all the money has been thrown into that thing. And then now they figure it out, like I said, yeah, they can pencil push for the money that's already been spent on the repairs that didn't.
Not actually fixed it.
Yeah, I mean, that's not really.
They, they pulled that, they, when it was at their shop.
Yeah.
So we approved the last, actually we approved the other one, which was like 10,000 something, and put that on, it didn't work, they pulled that back. They said, we took it back, took it back off the machine, you don't need it. So what has been up there?
Yeah.
We approved 10,000, 960, they put it on, it didn't work, so this is a little bit more, so.
10,000.
10.
Yeah.
So, with that said, now I went back on when they come out to the field where they were at our shop, saying, is there anything you can do there? But up there, they did pull back the parts that you said, I had to find, Wes said, hey, we're not gonna charge, but we put that part on, tie it up, took the part right back off, don't need it, we do need this, and it's 600 dollars more than the one that we proved prior.
Yeah.
So, in essence, we're literally just paying about like 600 dollars more than what we were last time.
And I said that one, yep, because we did talk about it at the two, three meetings ago and, and it was, it was 10,000 something. And then they had to order the part, came in and they put it all on and he called up and I was like, yes, Rob.
No, I thought it was in addition to.
Right.
And that's what, that's what I thought too, like, this is extra, but if it's only like a difference of.
So with the backhoe being, I apologize, so with the backhoe being up there, the whole time about the AIS, this is the only bill we have to pay that was because it was.
Don't.
We did pay one when it was at the field.
Right, I remember that. We didn't pay it. It's a. Jackson on my desk.
Okay.
Take it back. To fix it.
In essence, if you only want to be worth it.
Right.
But it's, it's like you're, it's like the pickup, I mean, you, you put your money into it upfront, like this all moves, it wiggles, it jiggles and they're not marketplace, I mean, that is a trade item.
Yeah, but I mean, Shane, correct me if I'm wrong, this thing's kind of a lemon, even outside of this particular issue?
Yeah.
I mean.
In time to be burned to bits.
Yeah.
Safe for one.
I just don't, I probably more than good than birth.
You know what? I, I can tell that the council just couldn't come to a conclusion and see if they can come up with a better price.
That's better.
I mean, you just, Shane, just have to be without a backhoe, just a few more days. See what happens.
Yeah. Why don't you?
Tomorrow, one of these guys, you know.
Alan, you got any idea?
Um, just a question, seems how when they threw the parts cannon at it and they said, well, none of those parts fixed the problem, we're not gonna charge you for those perks, are they going to give any type of refund on the, what was it, 40 hours that field service was out?
That was a question I never got answered and I, we didn't pay the bill, because he said it's on his desk. Wes from AIS said they're only gonna charge us this amount from the time it's been up there and originally it was 10,900, 10,600 and something.
Okay, but what was, what was the check for that you haven't sent in yet?
We haven't cut it, right, we haven't paid nothing for the.
Well, he said he's got the check, it's not on his desk.
Oh, there's a check there.
Yeah, there's a check.
How much is that?
Uh, I wanna say eleven thousand, or some twelve thousand, something like that.
So, they're still expecting to get paid for those labor hours?
That's right, right, so we got that check sitting there that we did.
So now it's up to twenty-two thousand?
That's right.
Okay.
That is correct, so at this point, this hasn't been paid, we have the track that we approved that we're gonna pay.
Right, right.
But we thought it fixed the backhoe, which it didn't, and then I, I told everybody, like, load, load it up, it's gotta go there, because the field guys.
My question was, were they gonna possibly compensate us for at least part of the hours?
I had that.
They didn't do any good with, you know what I'm saying?
So I was on the phone with Wes, and I asked him that, and he said he looked more into it, but right now he wanted to concentrate on getting the backhoe running. Because I told him every day that it's not running, we have no vehicle whatsoever, it can load, do anything that we want, so. Yeah, but they didn't answer that question either, so, I can make him be tighter on the program, especially after Shane has the check on his desk, and we do get it. So they haven't got anything on us.
Oh.
Right, I, I'd have to go along with, if you do have it fixed, once it's fixed, then run it, pedal it, and just get a hydraulic machine.
So, instead of designing the BSN A, we should table it for more information?
Yeah, yeah, I'm cool with that.
I don't know, motion shutting down, then we have to turn around, the motion open back up, but what does the table AIS do? Do we have more of a nail down?
If they want that whole forty hours, it's seventeen thousand dollars of labor, it's half of what the thing is worth.
Well, I mean, that's, in reality, that's.
Motion to table up AIS backhoe.
As much as it sucks for AIS, I mean, that's costing a business, I mean, that's probably the same thing that Brad has to deal with, and you know, BJ Renshaw's on something, and he thinks it's, say, a fuel pump, he buys a fuel pump, puts it in, you know, and sometimes you just have to take that loss, because you're like, well, I didn't fix it, so, I can't charge the customer, and, I mean, I'm sure on semi trucks, I've dropped a couple tanks, I've normal vehicles, and I'm not gonna drop the tank again, it's just like, well, I just took a three hundred dollar loss on that part, because I'm not gonna take the time to pop it back out, but, you know, you can't charge the customer for it, because you know, you should have known better, I mean, or it didn't fix it.
So, the real man motion to table AIS backhoe repair, too, and can get more of a nail down on the information what they're gonna do with this backhoe? So, no?
Second.
We got a second, so.
Second.
Second, right?
Second.
I don't know, let's just do a roll call.
Shoulder?
Yes.
Lower? Yes. Stabilizer?
Yes.
Holter?
Yes.
It's good.
Yes. Okay. Yes, I, I could talk to this, this Wes, he acts like a little man, but that definitely helped him get more going on the backhoe, like, being up there versus you.
I'm sure AIS part of my deals. Is it AIS part of my deals?
I think they are.
But I could say that might be part of the negotiation, too, it's like, if you guys are thinking about permanent, be like, okay, well, we paid for the repair of this, what do you guys have that we can purchase from you, and then do a trade-in deal, or sell this, I'll, you know, maybe work that deal, because then it might be more favorable, uh, discount a bunch of those hours, if they know they're gonna make money off you guys.
There's no bill too.
There's no bill, it's just a check.
Bring that to Justin, go.
I, I never saw a bill for it, but.
So you were just gonna give the guy who's there?
Yeah, he said that he was gonna bring out, I think it was the joystick, he's gonna bring out the joystick, joystick on, that's gonna fix it, and have a check ready for.
Yeah, that's a lot of dollars in there.
Yeah. If they haven't sent the bill, maybe don't bring it up.
Yeah. Yeah, that's true, I mean, they might, they might not even know about it, I mean, they might have already squashed it from it.
So I might just say, look, we just need the bottom dollar, bottom line, what we got on this whole system, so we know.
Right.
At this time, everybody here, we did not give them one. Dollar.
One rent guy.
Okay.
Trading them on something people. That's no better. Oh, yeah, it won't matter. Save, save equipment that's out of the, maybe it pays.
You're gonna have to use your feet. Because we're in this position, because somebody said I don't like using my feet.
No, they actually have joystick for chains that are hydraulic.
I used my feet the other day, and the dumpster did real well. Alright, do we have any adjournments?
Do we have any questions that came in on live stream?
No.
Okay.
Alright, then I make motion to adjourn at seven thirty-four.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All the same time? We are closing at seven thirty-four PM on that call.